Should we go ahead?
That's cute.
Chris, do you want to call the meeting to order?
Sure.
And we can...
This is the State and Budget Committee work session meeting called to order March 9th at 6:05 PM.
Thank you, thank you everyone for being here. We'll let the late stragglers come in and get started. I guess I just wanted to preface this by saying we are trying to change a little bit of expectations and culture and dynamic in the city of State by calling this meeting. This is something we could have done through the City Council. It's what's been done in the past, but in talking to colleagues and talking to other people in the field in terms of best practices and in terms of really trying to empower the Budget Committee, we wanted to have more conversations and to be more transparent and open about some of the things happening and felt like this would be a good prep as we go into the budget season. I do want to say that we consider the budget a living, breathing document, not only in the year-to-year changes, but in just in terms of trying to look for ways to enhance it, to make it more understandable and readable to the community and to make sure we're telling the story that the community can understand. And so these kind of meetings are sort of important to kind of revealing the curtain, if you will. I want to give Susanna a lot of credit. You know, she talked about, I like this saying, budgets are science and there's an art to them as well. And so what you're seeing tonight is that, it's the art and science of the budget kind of coming together. It's her doing a great job of sort of creating this budget. I'll take a quick pause here. So, this is really trying to continue to enhance, to improve our budget, to be open and transparent. We're going to make enhancements again this year for our 2021 budget and continuing to look forward to making enhancements and improvements as we move forward. So, I want to thank her, I want to thank Susanna for her work on this and thank the staff for our work on this and I will let her take it from here.
I'm going to stand up here so I can point these slides. It's a little easier for me when I can direct a little bit. So Keith kind of hit on already the kind of the goals of the meeting tonight, like he had said, to do a supplemental change, it would have just needed to been an open hearing and then being at the council meeting to make the adjustments. But there's so many different things going on in this change and what we had to do with the audit findings and that, we felt it'd be best if we brought you all together. And then I could backtrack a little bit and kind of talk through some of the key terms that were in the audit and affected and kind of how the things break out. It would also give us a chance to kind of lay that groundwork for the process because we're all going to be meeting again here in May to go through a much bigger scheme. So this way you can get to know me a little bit, answer any questions, you know, you have as you're preparing and closing this one up and then going forward. I am Susanna Spraja. I've been here, I haven't met either one of you. I've been here since June. My background is nonprofits and school districts and consulting, work with private businesses. So I've been in budgets a long time. The state of Oregon has some really unique tweaks to it, so I've been deep in classes and learning what the differences are between school districts versus Oregon budget law and nonprofits, because everyone has a different manual and they're all over 700 pages long, it seems like, so it's been really fun. So I'm going to kind of walk you through some of that tonight in small bites, just to kind of lay the groundwork, if that sounds good to you. And please stop me, ask questions as you need, okay? Really, I'm good with that. Oops, and I went the wrong direction, so how did I, what did I just do? Did I kill it?
No, you did. You're on two.
Did the projector go to sleep? I don't know. I hit the wrong button. Oh, on there. There we go. So then we go next, okay. So there's three different reasons why we have to make corrections to the 1920 budget. First is the audit findings that were presented at the council meeting for budget line items and why they're in the wrong line items. And I'll explain that too as we go through and what that is. The other thing is the original 991 apportionment resolution didn't have some numbers that matched out to the actual budget that the committee, that the managers and stuff had put together, so I had to make that correction so it tied out to match. And then there's just been some need changes that needed to be addressed and so we need to deal with those. So on your desk, space, table, you have three things. You have the original apportionment, you have the new one that we're changing to, and you have the PowerPoint here, so that way you can make notes or anything you need to do. So I have all of that on your table for you as we go through each one. And I'm just going to first go through a little bit of budget background, like go the right direction. Whoops, and of course I went too far. Okay, so here, our budget is broken up into...
Do you have the mic? Yeah. Sorry.
Does this have, does not have a pointer thing, does it? Oh, it does, okay. Has a pointer thing. Okay, there is, these are the basic categories of our budgets. We have our governmental funds and these, all these funds are within this category and our personalization. All of these are basically driven by property taxes or, and that's kind of why they're, that's why they're kind of grouped together and they have special rules that go with them. And then our utility funds, which we call enterprise funds, and in our fiscal policies it says enterprise funds, those are basically utilities and it's all of these funds, our water, our storm water, they're all there. Our inter, internals, I can't talk today. Our internal services are just the public works and facilities and that's because those funds are designed to support the city or the other areas. Then we have, of course, we have our capital project funds, which are over here, which these are in that. And then our special revenue funds, which of course are our library and our pool and parks and our streets, because they're specialized. So that's how our budget is broken out. That's how it's broken out in the audit, that's how it's broken out in our fiscal policy. So that kind of lets you see them kind of grouped together and they're all driven by different rules and different types of funding streams. So I thought that was a nice thing to give you as you're going forward, to have that little answer key. And of course audits speak in different terms, right? So we get to have that joy, but this is the basic breakdown. Any questions on that part? Okay. Couple of key terms to talk about as we talk about the changes going forward. We need to define contingency. So we have contingency in our budget and contingency literally means that it's for an unplanned expense. So when you're looking at on your budget line item, that's really, I'm probably going to spend it this year, but I don't really know what. For example, the pool, I have it there. I know I've got some maintenance problems, I don't know which is going to crash first, so then I just know that I'm ready to spend it, right? And so that's what that line item is for, it's planning for it, just in case, right? If we don't use it, it rolls, if we don't use it, it rolls into ending fund balances and goes into next year and we get to planning again. It's an important line item to have because budgets are always changing, so that's what that one means. Reserve for future expenditures, this one is really about saving for the future. This is the one in your fiscal policies that we're really planning that to hold on to, to make sure that's in our ending fund balance, save that for knowing we're planning for expenditures coming ahead, be a roof in a five-year, 10-years, or knowing economic downturns are coming, that we're protecting the city's cash flow, things like that, that we plan for that line item. Does that make sense so far? Any questions so far? Okay. Oh my gosh, I keep doing that.
Don't press that button anymore, okay?
Stop touching the bottom button. Okay, apportionments, this is what, this is the spending authority, this is what you guys have in front of you, this is what that you guys vote on and that tells us this is the limit we get to spend in each fund based on the budget approval process. And then capital outlay, just as you're fresher, because we're going to talk a lot about capital outlay in a minute, those are items that literally cost over $10,000 and they're attached to an item that's going to be longer than a life, a year life. For example, the library's HVAC system getting replaced is about $10,000, $1,100 and that is a capital outlay project, right? So things like that. The Jordan Bridge is going to be a capital outlay project because it's extending the life of the bridge and it's bigger than $10,000. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Thank you for explaining this stuff, but where on our sheets does it have the reserve for future expenditures?
It will be in next year's budget.
Wonderful.
What happened in this budget is the fiscal policies lined both of those out, but it all got rolled into contingency. So I will have that separated out for next year to line up where are their fiscal policies. Any other questions?
I guess, Susanna, I just want to add and also to be a little more clear on what the, we talk about long-term planning and five-year capital, you know, plans, but even 10-year and longer planning, it's to really highlight those things in a more defined manner too, so it's easier to understand where the savings bucket is and where the contingency bucket is.
Awesome.
So it's a dual thing of trying to be more open and transparent. I think one of the changes you're going to see in this budget is more in-depth, detailed look at those long-term capital items. And I'm going off a little bit, I'm not trying to take your thunder.
No, you're fine.
For instance, like the library, right now in the short term, they don't have any really, the HVAC system, you know, we're replacing HVAC systems every year for the next few years, but there's other large capital items that are going to be longer than five years out, but we still need to have them on the radar and start talking about those in terms of looking at the budget and having people understand. So hopefully when people see contingency monies, they won't think, well, this is just money we don't need, right? We're defining it in a better way, so this is some of the nice work that she's been doing.
Yeah, one of the other things to go on that is that we're building maintenance plans that span out to 10, 15, 20 years. And we're literally sitting down with each department in the fiscal maintenance, I don't know what Mike's title, is he just maintenance? What's Mike's title?
Facilities maintenance, yeah.
Right, so he's got all this knowledge in his head and he's pretty amazing, so we're doing is we're spreading that out over and going through each one and, you know, knowing when the roof should be replaced, when the carpet should be replaced, you know, when was the last time HVAC, right? We're planning all those things out, how long do the boilers last. We're building that for all of our buildings that we manage and so then we can plan in an organized fashion going forward and that will help those two line items, you know, between future expenditures and we know this might break this year, so we're preparing. If that makes sense.
That's awesome. That's really good to know that we're going to be planning out that way. I think it'll help our budget committee meetings go a lot smoother also.
Okay, good. So budget timelines, well, I kind of live in three years all at once. And this is pertinent to understand, especially when we have to keep bringing changes. So we build a budget, we start the fiscal year, don't touch the bottom button, we build our budget, we start the fiscal year, while we're in this year, we're already building this budget for the next year and then we're auditing this one up here that you don't see if you start down here. So this audit is actually doing the prior year up here, while we're now living in the starting of this fiscal year for this budget that we built up here. Does that kind of make sense? It's the best picture I could come up with, the kind of show that when we're, right now we're in this year, I'm about ready to start preparing for audit, while we're getting this budget ready and we'll start this fiscal year while we do this audit, right? Does that make sense?
Totally, it's a great, great picture.
So what is the lag time?
We don't, we don't get lag time. We literally, in the finance department, roll between one thing to the next. So right now, we're doing these budget adjustments, but we're also building the new budget at the same time I'm doing these adjustments, while we're getting stuff ready and prepared for the audit, because they'll be here in August, at the, you know, as we're getting ready to close out this year and start the next one and get it, so we're living constantly.
So are we doing an audit for 19 in August?
Yeah, the auditors, so the auditors will come in August. They will begin the 1920, this fiscal year we're in, start that audit process and they usually complete it by December, or try to get it November is always the goal, but try to get it by December, then we get it to the council as soon as it's approved.
So there is a lag of about six, eight months?
For the time, the auditors get there, but not for us, because at 7-1, we're getting all the prep.
No, but for us.
For you to see it, yes, yes. You will not see June of '20's audit until December of '20, yes, because it takes time for them to go through all our stuff with a comb. Okay, so like I said, the budget is a living, breathing document, so then we're planning in March for what we're going to do from July till June of next year. We can think we have an idea what could happen, but surprises always happen. So regardless, we're probably always going to have a budget adjustment or bring a change back because something happened. And that's part of what the third thing that I'm going to go through the list are things that happened that we didn't have budgeted for or we're pulling out of that contingency money, because of surprises. So, because things break, things end up costing more than we planned, we thought we knew the price in March, we get to September and find out, oh, the prices went up, things like that, right? So just so you have that in your head, knowing that you can't lock a budget down and be, that's it, because it is alive and it honestly, it's almost, our coined phrase from my past life was, the budget, as soon as the ink dries, is already outdated. Any questions on that part? Okay. So the first, the first change was the audit finding for having contingency in non-operating funds, okay? So this, an operating fund has to have personnel, material services and capital outlay, has to have one, two, or all three to be an operating fund. These are the ones that have the contingency because it's operating, things are happening, we're planning on expecting something to happen. Now, last year in 1819, and it was on the audit, these three funds had contingency line items without having these other ones, as well as this current year, these three SDC funds did not have these, but had contingency in there. Does that make sense? I know, it's confusing. So if you look on this sheet, we're...
Which sheet is that?
I'm grabbing it, hold on. This one here, the one that has, yeah.
Changes.
Yeah. I know, I'm going to give you a snapshot, but this is the one I'm looking at. These three funds, I had to move, these three funds, I had to move the money out of contingency and put it into capital outlay. And then on the third one down here that had, didn't need to be changed, we decided to change it so we could keep our SDC funds consistent, because they're very special and unique funds that are driven by projects. We chose to put them in capital outlay because we anticipate a project will eventually happen and so it's there knowing a project's coming and then we just have to bring it to you when the project gets started. So you can see, I kind of did a quick snapshot for you so you can see, there's all of the ones that we took it from contingency and moved it to...
Capital outlay.
Yep. Why do I have, oh, wait a minute, wrong slide. I didn't do that. Okay, sorry, I jumped ahead. So it's moved to it and that's what it says on your thing. I actually didn't give a snapshot, I just wrote it like that, but it's on your hand now, so that you can see that I'm literally taking the same total amount of money and I'm just moving it to an appropriate line item according to budget law, Oregon budget law. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
If you didn't do that, at some point, there would be a conflict, the auditors wouldn't catch it if they hadn't.
The auditors did catch it and then the state of Oregon will eventually say something to me as well about how, why we need to correct it. So they kind of like us to stick to the rules. So last year, that's why, and we had it two years in a row and that's why he restated it, because it didn't get corrected in this fiscal year. So everyone knows, the state of Oregon knows, and so the auditors know that I'm bringing it to council for you guys now and to the council meeting next week to get it corrected and they're all okay with that, for the timing. So you got to give me a little time. Any questions on that part?
We didn't get penalized for this?
No.
Okay.
No, no penalties. Yeah, it didn't cost us.
Okay. I'm going to just ask you to just explain that one more time. So the money was just in the wrong line?
Yes.
Is that all the issue was?
Yes, literally. If you look on page, and maybe I should have snapshot this too, sorry, I apologize. If you go to like page two, you see water, water systems development, SDC funds, you see the 522,000 is a negative in contingency and a positive in capital outlay. Does everybody see that?
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing, because you cannot have a contingency, a plan to spend money in a non-operating fund.
Okay, okay.
Right?
Yeah, because your contingency is just a, is just there for in case and we were planning to spend this money. I got you, I'm good enough.
Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah. We may, our contingency is in an operating fund because we're actively operating and doing things and we probably need to spend that money, we just don't know exactly what line item we're going to tie it to. Where an SDC fund is waiting, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, because SDCs are new for me, we're waiting for the project to be approved and it's based on a formula from our master plan on growth of the city and those are waiting for those developers and so it's just sitting there waiting, right?
I think this would make this, yeah, exactly. I think this is what makes this challenging and why the state, because we've been doing this for a while now and the state wanted us to fix it and that's why we're doing it this way. But basically the issue is with SDCs, is they're ready for development that's going to be part of future growth, if you will, right? And so developers could be eligible for SDC credits on projects they may do, but we wouldn't necessarily have any knowledge right now of developer coming, let's say in September, October and saying, I would like to do this project and it's SDC eligible. So what the state really wants us to do is to make sure we have this correct so that it's really defined to say, we have this money, we could spend it, we could not spend it, but it is there available to spend if the right development comes along. But if a developer doesn't come in, because SDCs are tied to your master plans and approve projects from your master plans. So if someone comes in and makes an improvement that is SDC eligible, then the developer would be eligible for reimbursements based out of these funds. So this is just kind of addressing what the state would prefer to see us look like in terms of doing that. But these are truly the items, there'd be some examples that we would know about, potentially like a Taco Bell coming, for instance, right? But there are a lot of projects we wouldn't know right now would be in the next fiscal year per se. And even sometimes the other challenge, I want to say this, is we couldn't necessarily publicly talk about them. You know, we're not at the point where we can publicly talk about what some of them might be until they reach a certain stage.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the first layer of change.
I have a question. Keith, does this also have to do with the transportation planning that we did where we're going to potentially put in like the roundabouts that would make an improvement to the area, which would then trigger SDC funds?
Yeah, so exactly, exactly. So let's say, and believe me, people listening, there is no plan for this, but let's say if somebody comes in, a trade sector business, for instance, and would like to then do this and we need to do that intersection at that point, maybe it's that trigger for the transportation plan. SDC eligible projects would then be, would be allowed to then receive reimbursement for those projects and that's basically what this would be entailing, so.
And similar to that bridge we had talked about briefly, that also is not being planned at this point over the wetlands that would connect Gulf Lane or whatever?
Yeah.
Like, that kind of stuff triggers SDC funds.
Yeah, so the transportation plan that we have has designated SDC eligible and has a percentage of SDC credits available to them, so if areas like that are triggered, then they'd be eligible for these credits, but that would all be dependent upon outside developers coming in and making those improvements or developments.
Okay, cool, thank you.
So then you can see from the rest of page two and part of page three, every one of those SDC funds are showing the negative contingency and the positive number in that capital outlay and it's all doing this for this reason. So the second correction you have on, you have a copy of the original 991 that was approved when the original budget was adopted. So I put a little orange color on each one of those, that those numbers actually didn't tie out to what was the real budget that we had planned for. So the state of Oregon said it's, you're lowering it, you don't really need to change it, you don't need to lower your apportionment spending, but I really wanted to make sure that it tied out exactly to what the budget originally was planned and make those corrections. And it was really an error of the Excel sheet that was used to create the document, trying to work on some more efficient ways to do that going forward. So that's literally all this is doing, is changing it back to what it was, this document should have said. And there's just a few errors, you can see, these transfers had the wrong numbers and then the total unapportionment amount was off by like $6,000. Any questions on any of that? Okay. And if you're looking at this one, remember that we had one more resolution after this one for the $30,000 for the pool. So the total apportionment was a little bit different, but this is the original one for the ending number. That was my first one, just in case anyone forgot. So the other one is going to be a little bit more because neither the changes that we needed to make to the budget to stay within spending authority and some things that had come up. Okay, so any questions on anything so far up to this point? Okay. So we have to live in a balanced budget, so revenue needs to equal expenditures at all times. So we had a couple things. The general fund, we received a $15,000 grant that we didn't know anything about when we originally approved the budget, so we now have a grant from Marion County for $15,000, so I need to add that to the revenue. So that was added. We have some reserve money that was sitting for the pool specifically, that sits in our beginning fund balance, that's restricted. So what I did is I moved that restricted money that was designed and earmarked only for the pool, I put it back into beginning fund balance so I could give it to the pool. And that is really the only two revenue changes that were for the general fund. That may not make logical sense to you, but if you think of each and every one of these funds as a business of its own, and if the pool is a business different than the general fund, but the general fund's going to support the business, I have to show the rabbit trail of how the money went to where it went and why. So sometimes when we're talking about these different funds and you see these transfers and different things, it's because they really are individual little businesses, for lack of better terms, easy terms, okay? And this, all of these are in here with the whole detail and this clip will be part of the resolution when you come. So I'm literally starting at the top of page one with the general fund, I'm going to work my way through this list now that I kind of did SDC funds and working backwards, okay?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I see that with the pool fund, it has the changes of the $26,000 and the $40,000, but where, can you explain again if I missed that, where that came from, where that money just, I know you said it was restricted funds, but where, what, where did it live before on this document?
It lived in the general fund's beginning and ending fund balance. All our restricted funds live in the general fund.
Great, thank you.
So that big old beginning fund balance has that money hiding in it.
Now it makes sense, thanks.
Because you got to think about, the general fund is like the big parent, right?
Yes.
It handles the big weight of it all. What, you don't like my terms?
In some ways, that's right. I just, I laugh, I'm sorry.
I like it, it makes it simple.
Okay. So there's been some changes that's come along that we've needed. So in assessing the police department for this year, there was a couple of big things we needed to accomplish. We needed to upgrade the body cams for the officers and in doing that, it also, we needed to upgrade our digital storage for the videos as well as evidence. This puts all of our new body cams, all new, modern, updated, handle more weight, all under warranty and it really was, thanks to technology, timed out and we really didn't get a choice and had to do it now. Couple other things and some building assessments, as we're going through these assessments, the police department needs a few things... the police department needs a few things that couldn't really wait. One of them is changing the glass in the lobby to bulletproof and a couple other problems that just couldn't wait. So we needed to increase the expenditures to 39,000. Go ahead.
I would say not bulletproof, but we do need to change the glass.
We are changing it to bulletproof. What are we changing it to? Tempor?
Yeah. It's not a bulletproof, I wouldn't call it a bulletproof, but it is.
It's not going to be that thick. It'll be this thick so they can punch it and not break it in Rachel's face. Oh, I thought it was bulletproof anyway. So there you go. See, he corrects me. That works. Sorry about that.
It's a temper glass.
Temper glass. So that's why we're increasing the police department for those two main reasons for the 39,000. Planning is going to take the expense for the grant. So that 15,000 is literally the grant we received and planning will oversee it for the spending of it. And it's from Marion County. Administration, we needed to increase expenditures by 17,500 because we need to do some adjustments, a little more consulting time for me with Summer as well as Cassell was having a major issues. We've had some major software issues we needed to deal with right away. And just the process of building the office and the things needed to get the changes that we just did, we needed to increase it by that much. And then there's your transfer to the pool. There's the 66,000 of that restricted money. We had to increase our transfers to send that to the pool. Questions on the general fund expenditure changes? The library is just correcting and moving the, they had planned to replace the AC vac, but we moved it to capital outlay where it belonged. And then I increased it by about $300 just in case it really wasn't 10,000. It would be a little bit more. It gave us a little bit of a cush. So that's just literally taking it out of materials and services and moving it to capital outlay.
Yeah, I just, to jump on this, our HVAC system for the library is, it has about eight individual home systems. So what we're on is a replacement plan for each one of those over the next few years. So you'll see this in upcoming budgets and you'll see this in future budgets as well. And then under 10,000 is not a capital expense. Over 10,000 is a capital expense. That's really kind of what you're seeing right here. But it's just trying to follow our policies and be consistent. So I just want to let everybody know that 10,000 will not fix the HVAC system. It's an ongoing process of, if you walk over there and you can see the different HVACs, and there's actually HVACs inside the building as well, so.
And we have seven total we're replacing?
Seven or, yeah, seven or eight.
Yeah. So we're doing one every year to stay on top of the maintenance of them. Any questions on that?
Okay.
So we moved the 66,000 over to the pool because the pool has a couple of issues and we increased materials and services by 26,000 because we've had some unexpected repairs that needed to be done. And we have some issues with the boiler and things. So we had to up those costs. And then when we were updating the fire alarm system, we found out it needed a major overhaul. So that's another additional fee that we weren't prepared for. So all of these expenses for the pool are just really expenditures that we really weren't preparing for, basically. Any questions on the pool?
One word. Is it actually boiler?
It's boiler. It's boiler.
Is it boiler or?
It's a boiler. You did that.
Spelling is not my forte. Numbers are mine. I'm a really bad speller and I totally missed it. Sorry about that. It is the boiler.
We're not going to, we're not going to turn on something and see or something.
No barbecuing at the pool right now. Sorry, guys.
So Suzanne, the capital outlay, the 40,000, so if I'm understanding right, is that money that we were expecting to spend or part of that is, is that part of contingency? So how does that work?
I pulled it from, and that's where she was looking at. If you look on page, where's the pool? Let's take a look. So you can see on the pool, I, by, I didn't have to pull it from contingency. I took it from the restricted funds and pulled that restricted funds over and led it from there.
Gotcha.
So that way I could leave the contingency there and then move forward with that.
Just to, I talk about restricted funds a little bit. I mean, what they are is they're funds that are designated for specific purposes or causes. So these were restricted funds that were designated towards pool improvements. So that's why we were able to use them. But we couldn't use those in a different area, so.
Right.
Just to kind of highlight what a restricted fund is.
Keith, are those the, is that the money that was like given to us? There's like a foundation, isn't there?
This was not from the endowment, no. These were funds that have been restricted since 1992?
Yeah, they were. Yeah, they've been there a while and they were donation, combination of donations and some fundraisers.
Oh, nice.
To sit, to sit there and wait for pool needs.
Awesome. Thank you.
So by pulling their restricted and leaving contingency, it keeps the pool in fiscal compliance. So that way, right now, the pool still meets the fiscal policies that the committee has set forward. So that's part of why moving that to use it. And that's what it's for and it's been there. It's why we pulled the restricted to leave contingency alone at this point. Any other questions on the pool?
So I'm, I'm looking at this packet that says changes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any of those numbers under pool.
Okay.
On page one?
When I go to, when I go to pool.
I got to come on this side and I'll show you.
I don't see any of those numbers.
Because when I make the change, that's how it'll end up, right?
They're under the change column.
So this is the one we're looking at?
He's looking at it from the newer.
Oh.
So we want this one.
This over here?
Yes. And we looked at the pool and you can see that I increased, this is what the original budget was. This is what we increased it and this is what the new budget line item is. These are the two we increased.
Now we're actually on the same.
Sorry about that. Everyone else, do you have any other things? We're using the PowerPoint, David, and kind of following down the form that says changes. And we are at the park fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the park had the money sitting in facilities for $100,000 to do the Jordan Bridge repair. So what we did is we moved it to the park so that the expenditures are in the park fund because the bridge is in the park. And also the cost of the park is going to be more like, or the bridge repair is going to be more like 140,000 instead of 100,000. So we had to adjust, one, move the money over and second, add more funds to be able to pay for the full repairs to the bridge. And that's what this one's doing.
So just for clarity, I think we came to the council with 129,000. Since they've been doing the work, they recommended an additional 10 to 11,000. And we decided since they were doing it and the cost savings was made sense at the time, and it was less than a 10% change, we just went ahead and moved forward with that change. So I just wanted to be clear for anyone who was just wondering about that, what the difference was.
Right.
And it wasn't part of the initial bid. It was just recommended work from the contractor and our engineer agreed with additional work and just used it as kind of preventive maintenance. So it wasn't a required fix, but we decided to go ahead and just do it all at the same time.
Question?
So where does the positive money come from? So like for the parks fund, we're transferring 100,000 from transfers to capital outlay, but we've got 200,000 worth of movement.
So I'm not moving any money back to facilities at all. I just ended that transaction and then that's why it's a negative. So I'm not moving that money.
Okay.
Because we had planned to do the work in facilities and we're going to do it in parks instead.
Okay. But where's the other 100,000 come from?
There was some in the, there was some already sitting there.
No, well, yeah, 10,000 was sitting there. You added 140.
Correct.
You would get 150. You took 100,000 out of transfers, but you added 60,000 to the contingency. Where's the other money coming from?
That's the facility side. So if you click over to the facilities.
Okay.
You'll see the opposite transaction where we didn't. We ended that money.
Okay.
And then the other is, it's how it balanced out to make revenue match expenditures, right? Because the revenue is still sitting there with beginning fund balance.
And all the other stuff came from?
That was already in parks. Was already sitting there.
But I mean, like the other departments, the general fund that comes out of?
General fund didn't, didn't do anything for the park.
Okay, never mind.
Am I confused?
A little.
Okay.
I'm asking where the, we got a lot of positive money going into these accounts. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So the general budget goes up by 118, 118. The pool fund went up by 66. The street fund went up by 12. Where does all of that money coming from?
So the pool money increased by the transfer from the general fund.
Okay, so it came out of the unallocated funds?
From the beginning, from the beginning fund balance, it was from the general fund's beginning fund balance. Correct. For the pool. Yes.
Okay.
Let me go back. Okay. I took the money out of the restricted funds and put 66,000 in the beginning fund balance for the pool.
Okay.
Right? And then I upped the transfer to the pool. And then I, and then I upped the expenses in the pool to match the 66,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I increased the transfer. So the increased transfers to the pool is increased revenue to the pool. And then I spent it on materials and, or we, materials and services in the capital outlay for the pool. Does that make sense?
Someone was wondering, if we're treating these like businesses, a customer had to spend $66,000. Which the customer?
General fund donated, gave to, put into the pool, $66,000.
So what I'm asking, so they came from the general fund?
Yes.
Budget. Okay, I was just saying, I didn't see something on here that shows a?
Okay. So this is, this is all about your spending authority. That's why this is only the expenses.
Okay.
That's why that, and that's the tricky part because the council's approving our authority to spend this money.
Budget committee.
The budget committee and the council, right. You're approving these expenditures. The revenue's going to come in, but in order to explain the path, I needed to explain the revenue so you understood it. And the, and the report in the newspaper shows those revenue changes on the one side of that and then the expenditures on the other. So that way you guys could see what it was doing. I probably made it more confusing. I apologize, but.
I have one clarifying question that is linked to what Luke is saying. On the parks fund, I see where 100,000 came from, from the facilities fund on page three in the changes section of parks. But then, and there was 10,000 there, but where, I've been looking for a $40,000 change somewhere in here.
You won't see it because it won't balance because the difference is increasing the beginning fund balance for it to balance all the way out. So there, the $60,000 in contingency and the 40,000 in capital outlay equals out my 100,000 that I brought over. That's why. It's weird, but that's how it balanced.
Does it just show up?
Yeah, I don't, maybe, you know, I'm not well-versed in accounting or anything, but I'm going to have to echo what I think Luke just said, which is money doesn't just show up. And I don't understand where that 40,000 comes from.
You've got to look at this line here.
Yeah. I just, I would like to.
Here, where's it? Right, it's a $100,000 change, right? And I've increased my beginning fund balance by 100,000.
The slide should be this page.
Yeah, so that bumps up to there, right?
She wants to show us where things are going.
Right, so I added 100,000 and I adjusted expenditures in order to make that 100,000. So where's that 100,000 coming from?
The change.
Beginning fund balance.
And where's that on here?
It's not because this is your expense.
Okay.
Not your revenue. Let me say that. Let me say that on the mic so you guys can hear. So when you're looking at this, you see that it's a $100,000 change, right? I moved money around and it's a $100,000 change, right?
Yeah.
I increased my beginning fund balance by the $100,000 to pay for the $100,000 expenditure. So there's your revenue.
Yeah.
And there's your expenses. Because when we give you the budget, we're estimating what our beginning fund balance is, but there really was more money sitting there that wasn't on the budget line. So all I did was increase the budget 100,000 to what was already sitting in our beginning fund balance. I just had to move it to the budget line item. Because we're, again, we're estimating what we think we're not going to spend to determine our ending fund balances, to start our new year with our beginning fund balances. So we had $100,000 more in our beginning fund actual balances than what we actually budgeted for. So by me increasing that beginning fund balance, I can now make this, this change. Because all I did was reduce, not do this transfer and increase these two expenditure line items. Does that help?
And remember last year, we had planned on doing the bridge repair. So that's where you're?
But where does the money come from? Like, it just feels like if we're pulling it out of air and we can just keep increasing things.
It came from another account.
You're not looking at revenue here.
Yeah, I know, but where's, where's this beginning fund balance that you're talking about in any of the papers?
It's not going to be on your paper because what you have is only the expenditures. Okay? Your beginning fund balance is a combination of money over time that we didn't spend. So property, the levity, taxes, pay, transfers in from the general fund pay. So this is money that's been in the park fund that we haven't used.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I feel like it would be more transparent for me if I could see like all of that information all together with the revenue as well so that we know where these puzzle pieces are fitting. Because otherwise it kind of does feel like we're just pulling money from like nowhere.
So. Aren't you taking that from facilities? Didn't you say the 100,000 came from facilities?
No, this is, I'm not doing this transfer. Sorry. I'm not, I'm not doing this transfer. I canceled that transfer and increased our beginning fund balance to cover this and this. So when I do our quarterly report and I show, when I do our next quarterly report, which is coming up in April, you'll see it on there. Because when I'm explaining the expenses, I have to explain every single change in each line item on your apportionment for what we show. And that's why, and each one of them is the total change, is that middle number. Some of them don't touch revenue at all. It's just moving different line items around and some are actually having to make some adjustments. And so each one that has a revenue adjustment, I have it on the slide as we move through them. Does that help? Luke, does that help?
Well, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Just, when you're changing things.
Right.
You can't just make things show up without kind of explaining.
Right.
In writing where it comes from? No, that's not in writing.
Well, I understand that. Well, I understand that.
But you have one, two, three, four departments that have money coming in and they don't all come from that one thing.
Correct.
But explaining that, you know, like, putting a note on here that says, "The money coming in is coming from our general budget" or "Coming from our unallocated funds" or something like that. So that way we can kind of see where the money's coming from and not, it's like, okay, well, the more uncommunicated movement, the more things look sketchy.
Okay, so what I was preparing you was the actual resolution that's got to go to the, to the council. So in future, then I'll just add that in and know that the resolution will look different. Cause the resolution is strictly based on expenses. I can make that change going forward, totally. I totally understand what you're saying.
See, we're not going to exceed the budget we already agreed to. We're just allocating it differently.
Yeah.
And to be clear, we're sitting here because we're not trying to be sketchy. You know, I mean, like I said to start this meeting, this, this isn't something we needed to do, but we're trying to, to really call it out and, and, and we're doing this for the first time. So I'm happy in the future, if you guys would like to see something else, to, to make some changes so we can make it as, as clear and transparent as we can. That was our goal with this, but we can make changes.
I appreciate this meeting. Like, this is very helpful. And it also triggers, uh, me to know that I, there's a few things I want to research on my own to understand this stuff better. So I do appreciate this opportunity and the work that you've put into this. Um, I know that you, you know, just started in June, in June of, what, June of last year, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, and so you walked into something completely new and you have done amazing stuff with, with, uh, all of our budgets already. So, um, just the que-, you answering questions, um, really helps me understand this better so that when we get to like a resolution at the council meeting or the budget committee meetings in May, there won't be as many questions.
And I want to tailor it that fits you. That's why even the quarterly reports, let me know what helps you. Because it is very confusing when A goes to B, that goes down to Z over there and you've got to, it takes a lot of time to balance it. So, but does that help you understand, okay, so that's what happened to parks, right? We've been wanting to do that bridge for a while, it sounds like.
I feel like what might be helpful for me, and this is just me and I, you don't have to make any changes for me, of course, uh, is just having like a, a number on these lines that with like maybe a note saying like C-line one. Like where we can then like go back and go, oh, that's where that came from. Like this popped out from.
Oh, gotcha.
Here. So like the facilities fund, that 100,000 on page three popped over to the pool. Was it the pool? No.
Yes.
Yes, the pool.
Okay.
Um, but just having like that little tiny note going, see page three, line whatever, or even just line 100 or something.
Okay. That makes sense. I, I make notes. That's easy to do.
Awesome. I like easy.
See, in my mind, I think I'm simple, but then you guys helped me know how to get simpler. I like this.
Well, yeah, but you, you're used to this. So, I mean, we're, we're, I'm, I'm a novice to a budget. So, um, I appreciate that you have patience with me. So thank you for that.
You're fine. Cause ultimately goal is the more that you guys understand the zigzag-iness that's required for Oregon budget law, the better it is for you to understand what you're approving. And that is really our goal and our direction going forward. Okay. Any more questions on park? And I can make mistakes, so might not, if it doesn't balance, I'll fix it. Okay. So the facilities, you literally see me voiding out the 100,000 that was going to be moved. And that's literally all that one's doing. So if you look on page... Three. If you look on page three, you see that facilities for contingency, I took, but the 100,000, took it out, changed it. We took it back out. Cause it's not going to do the bridge. Does that make sense? Oh, that made an error. Okay. Stormwater, there was an additional, um, expense from the San Yam Water Control District for $25,000 that we needed to add into the budget. So that's just adding that expense. I took the money from contingency to move it to that expense. And that's in our MOU with our relationship with them. So if you look here, stormwater. If you look at the top of page two, it, you can see all the line items. And I literally just increased the expense by that 25,000 and, and took it from contingency. That's why it says a zero net change, because I just moved money between line items. Any question on that? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
That doesn't, uh, that doesn't have anything to do with what we already paid on the water for the intake system.
No.
This is extra.
This is new. This is a new contingency based off that MOU that was signed in 2013.
What's the life of that MOU?
Indefinite.
There's no end to it?
Not with some of these things, no.
What about with the cannery shutting down? Can you revisit it?
I wouldn't say the cannery would be the, like, the kickoff to that, but I think it would be interesting to have a conversation about that MOU.
I think it could be.
To look at, see, to see where it's at and what, what is entailed in that and what's happening with it. The city has spent quite a bit of money on that MOU.
I understand that and that's my concern.
Sure.
And I think, uh, that if you look at opening that thing because of the cannery, at least a certain portion might be attributable to the cannery.
Well, I think, I think also what the city has done in terms of, of managing stormwater and, and some of the initial causes for the, um, for the lawsuit that was, that, that came about because of that and the settlement essentially, which is what the MOU is. Um, you know, most notably the, uh, stormwater facility on Kendall Way. So, I mean, I think the dynamic of, of the situation has changed. And so I think it'd be time to have a conversation, hopefully with a, a partner in that, but we'll see what happens.
I think that's a good idea.
So that is the, the, that's the list of all the changes. Any questions looking back over on any of those before I go into the final slide? And I can go backwards a little bit, too. Cancelled that transaction since the expenses are staying in parks. Adjusting to do the expense to the park. Pool's additional maintenance needed. The library just moving its capital outlay because the cost of the HVAC is over 10,000. General fund, it needed some improvements. Uh, the police department needed some additional work as well as planning for the grant money. Administration had some more and then the transfer to the pool. And the revenue to the general fund for the grant we got, that, and the, the increasing the beginning fund balance for the pool. Kind of a super fast for you, David? Do you have questions? You can totally ask. It's fine.
No, I don't at this point. I'm going to review the material. I apologize for my absence.
You okay, Luke?
Good. I, I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
What does REF mean at the bottom of page three? It says hashtag REF over the total.
It's an Excel indication that there's some kind of error of the formula there.
Somehow the film, the formula boofed it when I copied it over. It's just the totals.
Okay.
That's all. Because the, um, that's, that's there just so that when you do get your budget to actuals, you'll see the totals tie out. Because in that, um, 3.7 million that I added that 6,000 to, because it was a typo, those are the reserve funds that's, that are not to touch, were to sit there. So this is just so you see it balanced, but I didn't realize when I printed it that I boofed the formula. I apologize on that. It'll be on the, it'll be correct on the report for the council. Cause we save. Cause if you look at the resolution 991, it has the total at the bottom. He breaks it down a little bit different than how he did, but I wanted the totals to tie out. So he just kind of listed it. So you can see that the total revenue was 20 million and that are reserved, that we were saving is 3.7, making the total budget 24 on the very last page of the actual resolution that you did in the original budget. That's what that was supposed to do, is total it up. And also make sure that I got all my numbers in there.
So to, to kind of clarify, at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward a resolution basically detailing the things we have here tonight. I think with the comments, like I said, the goal is to, to provide information. Same thing with the quarterly reports, to provide information, um, and to make sure that we're conveying. So we'll take the notes from tonight and make changes going forward. So, um, as we continue with this process. So we're, we're hoping this is kind of a change in, in culture and a change in, in process and this is just kind of the new norm, so.
Any other thoughts on that before I go to the last point to talk about? It's clear as mud, right? Okay. One of the changes from meeting with the state of Oregon and going through the training is that they are moving to, um, larger, less, well, how do I put this? They're moving to bringing these three expenditures, not separated out, but put them in one total. And that more and more cities are moving to that, um, unit. So when I literally sent this form that you're going to be your new change back to the lady that I did the class with and said, "Here you go", she says, "This is what you want to be looking at, um, for going forward to move these together." So I'm presenting that to you tonight to kind of start that conversation. There's a few reasons why this, because if you think about the resolution as just the approval for expenditures, right? That's all it is. I still will talk in budget, still talk about personnel, talk about the different things that are going on, but this is just the approval. So for example, if a staff member leaves unexpectedly and we have to have a change in personnel, but we were way underspent in, uh, materials and services, I can just make the adjustment, tell you guys about it, but not have to come back and actually have an approval line change by grouping those together. That's one of the advantages to doing that, first, doing that process. Cause I already told you, we're going to come back with budget changes regardless. It doesn't mean that I won't come in my quarterly meetings and report the changes and keep you up to date and keep you up, uh, of what the budget to actuals are doing. All right? This is just to talk about just that approval line item total. Cause we need to stay within our spending authority.
So the line item will still be presented, still be available, still, this is just talking strictly about the approval apportionment portion of it.
Yeah. This resolution, your 991 resolution that you approved would look like this side. So then if we had a contingency, so this one here, we're, we think we're going to need to spend it, but we don't know. And then we're like, okay, so, you know, the HVAC collapsed at the city council, at the city hall, we had to change it. I'm still coming to you to move that up here so that we can, you would know that. So you, does that make sense? Is that a bad example?
It's fine.
Okay. Probably for audit tracking and purposes, the, the, this 1920 will be like this, but the 2021 will be together. If that sounds okay to you. And you could decide that when we start the budget talk in May. You don't, this is not a decision. This is just something that we like to move forward. So I wanted this in your thought patterns, why we start doing our committee meetings in May and looking at me having the resolution look like that. It won't be for this one because the auditors, you know, they like to tie it all out and I'd have to do more changes. Questions, thoughts?
So just for clarification, you're saying when we do the full budget, we'll see those line items, but when we're doing changes, we're going to lump them?
Yeah, so when you're looking at what we're actually going to, so the budget will have the line item details like you're seeing.
Yeah.
All of this is just when we're actually doing the, the, uh, the resolution to.
Got it.
To approve, um, the recommendation from the state and the recommendation from, um, our.
Consultant.
Consultant is, is, this is what cities are doing to, moving to, just in terms of making it easier for appropriations.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's agreeable with the auditors also, I assume?
Yes. Yes. And it might help when we do changes for how many different line items we're looking at. One of the things that's important as we're going forward is in those, um, in our budget committees, it's really, you know, let me know, even after you've had a chance to think about this meeting tonight, tell Keith some things that may be different that I can tweak to help with understanding this. Because I wanted to translate over to when I do the quarterly reports and give you the budget to actual updates, what you need to see in those reports going forward, so you are up to date on what's happening. Cause we will be looking at fiscal policies pretty soon and having updates as well. So there'll be, there'll be a lot of things we'll be having to talk about. Any other thoughts or questions? Cause that's all I have at this point.
Cover your eyes.
Yes, here it comes.
So, um, we, we still want feedback. We still like to hear from you. We're happy to meet the people in, in person. We're happy to, oh, this one doesn't work. Sorry. You know, this is a, we've talked about this. This is a, a process we're moving forward. So we're still wanting feedback. Uh, we're still wanting advice. You know, we talked about the budget being a living, breathing document. We want to improve it, enhance it. We want it so the community can understand. We want it so that it's as transparent as we can be. So, um, we want your feedback. You can meet with us. You can send an email suggestion. You can be ready to come talk at the, at the budget meeting, meetings. I just want to note on the agenda, it talks about our first meeting is Monday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. Uh, that's where we'll pass out the budget and do the budget message. And then the actual, um, budget committee will meet to, to go over the budget, may, Monday, May 11th at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, May 12th at 6:00 PM, and then Wednesday, May 13th at 6:00 PM if it's needed. So, um, we want to make sure we have the time to go through with that. So, um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions. Like she said, with the quarterly meetings, we still want updates. Uh, we want to try to make this budget as clear and transparent as we can. And any, any improvements or enhancements or, or comments or questions, we're, we're happy to try to work with.
I do have one. Uh, Susanna, perhaps you've already answered this and I apologize if you haven't. I'm wasting everyone's time here. But as far as the different operations expenditures and how they're being grouped, will we have any kind of key provided to us in the future? Just what different lines of accounting are encapsulated in that one line item that's now being collapsed down to one? Just so that we have reference to that?
I can leave the, um, quarterly reports by the same breakdown.
Right. Okay.
So that you can see that and then, um, know that the total line would be the apportionment that you're standing against.
Just maybe a canned template, though, to go with the budget document in addition for the citizens. I don't want anybody to think we're trying to hide the ball here.
Correct.
And we're not, obviously, but I, I don't ever want that to be a thing that we have to explain. So maybe just something that's easy to break down. Okay, this is what the operations, uh, not fund, but expenditures going towards. And these are the different lines of accounting for that. Is that something we can do?
Yeah, cause right now your general fund is already approved that way. If you look at the 991, you'll see that police is just a grand total.
Right.
That's not broken down.
I know.
So this is just getting all the other funds to line up.
Right.
And then when I'm showing you guys the budget, what I've done so far, the template's just been total line items at this point to try to keep it simple. But I can break it out.
Yep.
And.
And maybe not on that.
Give me feedback as I do it.
Right.
Make it, see what you need to see.
And I like the. And I like the bottom line upfront approach, but just some sort of explanation so that we can refer back to it would be terrific.
Okay.
It's my only feedback.
Thank you, Susanna.
Your, thank you.
This work session is adjourned.
Okay.